And state that this meeting is being held in compliance with the provision of the Old Town Public Meetings Act, CL 1975, Chapter 231, it was properly noted and has been posted and certified by the court. Please call or roll.
Mr. Hoffricham.
Here.
Ms. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Shinloos not here. Uh, Ms. Smith is here. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
And Mayor Francis.
Here. Now, I'd like to invite our Cub Scout Pack Eighty-Eight to present the colors.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, usually we do the committee report and the administrative report, but tonight I think we'll do the proclamation first, and it's for the Hour of Light for Zachary. So Zachary, would you please come forward? Come on. So Zachary has just done his Hour of Light, and that's a big deal. So this is his proclamation. Whereas the strength and future of a community are reflected in the activities, successes, and accomplishments of its citizens. And whereas Zachary Nevers, a member of the Cub Scout Pack Eighty-Eight since February two thousand nineteen, has earned the highest award in Cub scouting, the Hour of Light Award, by completing all the requirements outlined by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Zachary is an outstanding young man who has been very active in his den, meeting every challenge through hard work and determination. And whereas Zachary has earned numerous merit badges demonstrating his knowledge in a variety of subjects, he has also been an attendee at Boy Scout troop meetings and Boy Scout-oriented outdoor activity, enjoying exciting adventures in the world of nature and developing skills necessary to become a good steward of the environment. And whereas Zachary has grown in knowledge, skills, and confidence, building a strong foundation for future accomplishments, his sense of community involvement and concern for others sets him apart from the ordinary and inspires all of us. It was great pleasure and joy that I congratulate Zachary and wish him much success throughout his Boy Scout journey. In witness whereof, I, Michael Francis, may ever pack on to hereby proclaim March first, two thousand twenty-three, as Zachary Nevers' Day. There you go. Thank you. And so this is no small accomplishment, and, uh, and actually doing proclamation with scouts is one of my favorite things to do because it's so important. It's so important for our community, and, and it's the future of our community. You know, uh, we, we have the Blue and Gold Dinner, and when you look around and look at that energy and look at that enthusiasm, you, you have to see it to believe it. It's really spectacular, and these boys do a, a hell of a good job. And by the way, they couldn't do it without the parents. So I always have to acknowledge the adults that are involved in scouting. I'm, I'm an old troop committee chairperson, so, so it, it takes a lot of time, but it's worth every, every second that an adult spends working with these, with these young people, boys and girls, by the way. And so it's a great accomplishment. I'm looking forward to speaking at your Eagle, at your Eagle celebration, okay? So hang in there, keep doing it, don't stop, stay with it. But, but truly, this is really the future of, of our community, and it's such an important part of the fabric. You know, scouting, uh, scouting is good, uh, in the sense that it, the adult influence is critical, and if we all live by the Scout laws and the Scout law, we'd have a different world today, right? Believe, trust me. And I would challenge people and have challenged people to say, live by the Scout laws and the Scout law for one week, everybody, everybody, every person, every adult and every young person, live by the Scout laws and the Scout law for one week, we would have a different world today, I guarantee you. That's how important it is with the, with the moral compass that the adults set for these young people, and, 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 uh, and the, the ethics that they teach them and the values they teach them, it's invaluable. Only home life and parents can do that. We can make efforts in school to do a lot of different things, but, but scouting is really a crucial element in the future of these young people. So thank you, adults, and thank you, scouts, hang in there. Dawn?
Yes. Okay. Uh, next Wednesday, March eighth, the Project Self-Sufficiency Journey Bus will be outside of the community center from ten AM to two PM. So if there's, um, any outreach or resource you need from the county, you can visit the bus in the Hopakon Community Center parking lot. Uh, next Thursday, the ninth, the Center for Prevention will be at the community center from three PM to seven PM. Uh, last Thursday, they did a Narcan training, uh, for some employees in town and their friends, and it was just, it was very successful, um, very impactful, and, um, I think a relief just to know how to do it, if God forbid you ever had to use it. So that was very well attended, and the feedback is that more people want to have Narcan training. So if anyone would like to do that on any night that the Center for Prevention is at the community center, you can go ahead and walk in and receive the training along with a certificate and a kit that you took the training. Just let me know ahead of time, uh, just reach out to me through email or through the community center, and just let me know. This way, the trainer can have enough kits for everyone. Um, so that will be back at the community center next Thursday, the ninth, from three to seven. Um, on March twentieth, the All Cancer Support Group will be meeting at the community center from seven to eight thirty. So usually it's, it's on, um, it's on a Wednesday. Um, but the, the head of that group is actually speaking in front of Congress that day, and she's advocating for, uh, cancer patients, um, aftercare, uh, patients' rights. Um, it's a really big deal, we're really proud of her. So I know it's always a dedicated day, but we had to change her from Wednesday to Monday, March twentieth, at the community center, seven to eight thirty. And I don't know if my calendar's right, but it's telling me daylight savings time is March twelfth, is that correct? Is that early?
They moved it.
Oh, they moved it? Okay, thank you. So put your clocks spring ahead, go ahead, ahead one hour, you're gonna lose an hour of sleep, March twelfth. Okay, and that's it for now.
Thank you. Brett?
Mayor, uh, just one thing, on Thursday, March the ninth, at the Lake Hopakon Foundation Office, and that's located at the old train station, one twenty-five, Lanning Road, the Lake Hopakon Commission is hosting April Sendor from the United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Service, and she will present different strategies, uh, to help control the population of geese on Lake Hopakon, and specifically what property owners can do. The state of New Jersey is estimating to have double the recommended population of migratory Canadian geese, who are no longer migratory, as you know, during the winter. We have quite a few still staying, always staying around, and they are a major source of pollution in Lake Hopakon. They're also looking for volunteers to help with outreach and an egg idling program, which is going and finding the nest and, and just basically, uh, uh, doing one or two things with the eggs, with it, and so, uh, they would like to see if any volunteers are available. Uh, you can contact them or come to that meeting that night. That's it.
Thank you. Dawn, your update?
Thank you. Um, first of all, from recreation, uh, we had a presentation by a gentleman who is, it's, it's not necessarily gonna happen, but they're looking into it, uh, a gentleman who's gonna come in and give tennis camps and tennis lessons utilizing the tennis courts over by the senior center. I'm not sure if it's gonna work out or not, but it was a interesting concept and, and listening to him. Um, they had some discussion about field requests. Um, right now, basketball has been going well, it's nearing the end of the season, there's basically two weeks left in the season, and we're also, uh, um, discussion about the end of season little celebration that we do, probably gonna be changed up a little because we have a lot more, uh, players this year, so we'll probably be splitting that up. Um, had some conversation regarding street hockey, which there's gonna be an in-person registration for street hockey Friday, March third, uh, I believe that's at the senior center, and then on Saturday, March eighteenth, that's when there's the in-person registration at the rink, um, which is where the bulk of the registration is done, but we're trying to offer different opportunities. The Easter egg hunt, quite a bit of discussion on that, that's coming up Saturday, April first, at Modic Park, uh, gonna be a few changes in it this year, they, they sound very positive. Um, I think one of the things we're talking about bringing in is one of those little train rides for some of the younger children, but that's the next event that they have coming up. Um, from open space, we had our meeting last week, we had discussion on Hopakon, Witten Park, uh, we had discussion on Roland May Eve Sanctuary, and also discussed forestry management in the Natural Area Preserve. I mean, we're kinda looking to see what goes on with all three of those things in the near future. Um, you know, anyway, municipal alliance, uh, we're kind of at a in-between winter and, and spring little lull, but we are looking to help sponsor the police-run bike rodeo, that's where the police, uh, they basically set up a course and they teach kids how to safely ride bikes. Um, and from the Environmental Commission, we had our rework meeting last week, our meeting in January got canceled. Jewel Derman is once again the chairperson, she's been doing a wonderful job. Uh, we had our new representative from land use, Jonathan Taylor there. We had discussion about yard waste, uh, there is kind of a yard waste right now by town ordinance, it's still under the, it's still considered litter, and we had conversation about that, um, possibly changing that because environmental recommendations are to compost it. Um, when I say yard waste, I'm talking grass clippings and leaves, so we'll see where that goes. Uh, the beautification committee will be coming up soon, uh, once the weather breaks, they'll be out in Maxim Glen in front of the building here doing their annual decorations. The tree, we had conversation about the tree recovery, we'll be getting five hundred trees from the, from the state. Uh, we also talked about Roland and May Eve Sanctuary, um, and Witten Park, we'll be changing the lobby display very soon, and events, the first one coming up is, is gonna be, uh, the free tree giveaway, which will be, should be Saturday, April twenty-second, from nine to twelve. The following week is Arbor Day, we're talking about doing another tree planting somewhere, um, that's a Saturday, I don't have any times on that. And then the Autobahn Guided Bird Hike, which we do in the Roland and May Eve Sanctuary, that's scheduled for May sixth, that's a Saturday from nine to twelve, and then the Environmental Commission will be, um, part of the Lake Hopakon Foundation Block Party, which is scheduled for May twentieth from ten to four. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Ryan, your?
Uh, next Chamber of Commerce meeting is, uh, March tenth, uh, the next Chamber of Commerce B-to-B breakfast is March fourteenth. Uh, anybody who's studying or going back to school, there are professional development scholarships, you apply for them on the Chamber of Commerce website, go to SussexChamber.org, and, uh, fill, click on the link there, and you can start filling out the application. That means if you're going back to school or you're in school, um, maybe you're going for a license or a certification, uh, you can get some help there, uh, financial help. Uh, over at the SCUMA, uh, the next paper, paper shredding event is March seventeenth. Um, I want to cordially invite everybody to come to the Spring Musical at the high school, it is Bye Bye Birdie, it's May fourth through seventh, and, uh, the, uh, Hopakon High School Tricky Tray is also coming up, I know that's a big event in the town, and that's, uh, March twenty-fifth, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, um, we have a parade committee now, and we have met twice, um, and we are preparing for Memorial Day. Uh, it will be the Saturday, May twenty-seventh, um, we're looking to involve everybody, as many people in the town as we can, letters will go out in the next, um, week or two to invite all the organizations in the town, and, uh, we are looking forward to finding some music, as well as the high school band, uh, maybe some other kinds of music, and, um, we would like to have all the scouts and, um, fire people, I know they have their own parade coming up in, for the county in, um, the fall, but we are, are absolutely one, our fire department and ambulance squad involved, and, uh, if we have any questions, if you have any questions, you can approach us, we're in a planning stage, so we'll see how it goes.
Thank you. Administrator report, your update?
Yes, um, Mayor Council, we have the budget, uh, for two thousand twenty-three on the agenda tonight for introduction. Um, we were able to, uh, successfully create, craft the budget with a zero percent tax increase is the overall ultimate bottom line. We did have an evaluation increase, uh, assessed value of about two point seven, a little over two point seven million dollars, and the overall, um, budget appropriations and revenues equals out to eighteen million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Um, as we closed the operations for two thousand twenty-two, we were able to regenerate fund balance and end the year, uh, with, or start our new year with six point one million dollars. Um, that reflects having a really good year and a great, uh, tax rate collection. As you'll note, the tax collection, uh, rate has now increased slightly up to ninety-eight point three seven percent, and Patty and our collections office have done a really good job, and they've increased the amount and percentage of collection, uh, year over year over the last several years. Um, also in that regenerated fund balance would be the cancellation of prior year of, uh, reserves for appropriations, which would reflect two thousand twenty-one, um, and in any unanticipated revenues, such as the sale of properties, and, um, you know, uh, other revenues that may come around or come about during the year that were unanticipated. Um, with DPW and Water and Sewer, um, they have hauled the road sweepings to the Sussex County MUA, they've, uh, started repairs on large cracks in the hockey rink so that the rink is, is ready for the street hockey season, that will be happening, uh, within the next month or so. Um, obviously, y'all know, we had a snow event, uh, which thankfully for this winter has been a rare occurrence, but over, uh, February twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth, there is a, a forecast of mixed precipitation for this Friday, late afternoon, and then over Friday night into Saturday. Um, we believe that that will be, uh, maybe a salting event, there shouldn't be any appreciable accumulation of snow from Friday's night. Um, we have been successful, we had a, uh, meeting of the minds, uh, with the Hopakon Homesteads Beats Association, so we are able to move forward, um, the borough attorney will be crafting a specific easement language that will be, be presented to them. We did receive the approval from them to be able to start our work immediately, so the next steps in that for the PFAS at, uh, Mariner as well will be the electric work that we need to have done from Jersey Central Power and Light and the concrete pad. Um, I'm also pleased to, to announce that at the Crescent Cove well, well three and three A, uh, that PFAS system is up and running, and the results have been zero detection of PFAS, uh, post the, the, the filter coming onboard, we have zero detection of PFAS in the River Sticks well as well. Um, the concrete pad for well twelve on Durbin Avenue is being completed, and the, uh, skid is, uh, scheduled to be delivered next week during the weekend, March sixth.
Thank you. Now, we have a public comment, I'd like to take the motion to open the meeting to the public.
So, yes.
All in favor? Uh, an opportunity given to the public for commentary, comments are limited to one comment, there's no more than five minutes. Welcome, public.
Good evening, Rachel Rodriguez, Nine Skyline Drive. First, I wanna congratulate Zachary Nevers, I know he's not here, um, on his Hour of Light Award, I'm sure his family's super proud. I also wanna congratulate Tyler Uclaya, and I hope I'm saying that right, I know he's not here tonight, um, but he said since he's joined the fire department, he's always wanted to become the fire prevention specialist, so I'm gonna congratulate him on that. A question regarding paper road maintenance, I know we have a lot of paper roads in town, so of the ones that are paved, what's the process in getting them repaired, um, and if there's any reason a residence should be turned away, um, if they were to submit a ticket for any type of repairs? Um, and my last question is, the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce Dinner, I saw held their annual, um, sorry, they held their annual dinner Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, and we, and just wanted to know if Hopakon was represented, represented, and if there were any Hopakon businesses present?
I have a, a handout, might give you a visual, I don't know if I have it for everybody, but... My name is Liz Terliger, Eighteenth Isabel Ave, the old Roland May Eve's house.
You wanna give her your name and address, please?
I just did.
Okay.
Want me to say it again? Oh, Eighteenth Isabel Ave, Elizabeth Terliger. Thank you. So, uh, it's been brought to my attention that the town has finally taken over block seven zero one zero seven lot eleven and twelve, that's highlighted in blue. Um, I'd looked into this property, property back into two thousand and fourteen, shortly after we moved into our house. Um, I reached out to the owners, knowing the taxes hadn't been paid and got no response, that's almost ten years ago. Um, since two thousand twenty, I've pushed looking into these two lots, they're the closest dwellings I have to my property, and they're total eyesore. Um, from what I'm told, it would only be sold to an adjacent lot, what, which I am not, because I am actually across the unimproved road. Um, I've been in contact with Lisa Watts, who currently owns lot seven zero one zero seven lot thirteen, she's highlighted in yellow, which is the only adjacent lot to the lots of interest to me. Um, her only interest is getting the property line straightened out, since, um, the dilapidated home on lot twelve is over her property line by about two feet. She has no interest in buying the whole piece of property, she has also reached out over the past few years trying to get it straightened out. The two lots together are approximately eleven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, which I believe is considered a non-conforming lot, which cannot be built on, which I have no interest in doing so. So if the only person interested is someone who is not adjacent, I'm wondering if it would be considered selling it to me, I would also work on getting the property line straightened out for Lisa Watts, she sent me her survey, that's also attached, um, and I'm sure we could get a written letter from her stating what her needs are, um, so if somebody could just, um, lead me in the right direction from here, that'd be great.
More public? Come on, Dave.
David Harris, one twenty-five Dupont, I just wanted, with these new ordinances that are being introduced, could you elaborate somewhat on them, especially the animal licensing
Jennifer Johnson, Sixth Narita Comp Ave, I had a question about the, two things, the, no, I can't find it now, the shared service for a municipal court, that's for Andover coming to us, or us going to Andover, is the question, because I know we have a shared service for municipal court here with Nick Byram, and Netcon, if I'm not mistaken, and then your R two zero two three dash forty-seven, uh, needs to be pulled before you pass the bills list, on the bills list, before you pass, you have to pass that first. And I also had a question about the budget, the budget is a month from now, right? That's April fifth meeting, and that's when the budget presentation is made.
That's, yeah, the presentation will be made then and public hearing that day.
Public hearing that, okay, that's all, thank you so much.
More public?
I'd just like to congratulate Tyler, and I can't pronounce his last name either, you feel, you know, on his latest accomplishment, because he's been quite a benefit to this town. Thank you.
More public? There we go?
Move to break back.
Sir?
I'll say it.
Aye.
We're back. And usually after the public comments, I try my very best to answer questions, if the get too complicated, I'll even have the administrator or the attorney, uh, respond more accurately, but, uh, the road maintenance is really, uh, Pat Mason and a DPW, and, uh, he putting together a program right now, which should, I'm hoping it's ready for the next council meeting on our schedule of paving, which should answer a lot of questions. Hopefully, we're gonna be very, uh, very aggressive, last year was really tough because the, uh, price of the, uh, the price of the, the paving just went out, went crazy, so we, we backed away from that. This year, it looks like it's a lot better, so we can be much more aggressive. I don't have the schedule for town roads, but we do have a, uh, a, a federal grant for Ungar Avenue and surrounding roads, and we do have a grant for, um, Northwestern, so we'll be doing extensive work on them, I'd probably like to do them first, because, uh, because the money's already there, as I understand it, and then we'll get to the town roads, and, and hopefully I can, uh, I can announce perhaps list of roads when he does it, he's almost done with them, but probably at the next meeting, I'd like to do that, so everybody knows where we're gonna be, and hopefully when, but, uh, you'll know the location, and we'll get to them. Chamber of Commerce Dinner, Brian, can speak to that?
That was last night, I was there, uh, there were well over two hundred people in attendance, I didn't take attendance, but, uh, I saw a lot of familiar pictures there, so I, I really couldn't tell you which businesses were represented, but there were a lot of people there.
Okay, Isabel Avenue, yes.
Yes.
And so what you need to do really is, uh...
We, we should, we should review this and see what kind of, uh, kind of solution we can find with the real estate committee.
Yeah.
We gotta talk to, to John Rushdie about what, uh, who uses Isabel, and I don't know the state of it, but we can, we can look into it, I'll discuss it with the real estate committee.
Yes, and, and, and Dave, uh, we're, we're, we're very aggressive when it comes to that, we're not gonna just let it sit there, not. Uh, usually when we acquire these properties, I, I personally review each one, I generally get, uh, I generally get patrol and the fire department and go up there and make sure there's no imminent danger, and then we secure it, and then after that, it's a conversation, if you want to acquire it, would, uh, I would, I would get ahold of Dave and let him know you're interested, and then the next process will be real estate committee, and then any legal issues, and we, we cross our teeth and dot our i's, but hopefully, uh, we could get that. We don't like to keep it, we have no reason to keep it, we have no desire to keep it. So, uh, the quicker we can do that, the better, but we have a process that we go through, so thank you for being interested. Um, animal licensing, uh, we're gonna make that an annual basis, rather than in June, we're gonna, we're gonna go to January, January, which makes more sense, so. Uh, and as it's what'll happen is, if your dog is licensed now, and, and it's up in June, it's, we're gonna carry to January, and in January, we start everybody on the fresh clock, if you will. It just makes more sense, and people understand it better. Shared service, the shared service for the court will, will be in Andover, not at Hopakon.
So our court services are going over there?
Yes, and it's, it's really a joint court, uh, the state government really encourages that, it, hopefully, uh, the economics will be good, we're not done with it yet, we're working on agreements, uh, we're also working with Netcon on, because they're a shared service for us, so. Stanhope, I'm sorry, Stanhope. Uh, so, uh, it's in the, it's in pretty serious discussion now, which is, no agreements are done yet. done yet. But anytime we do a shared service, it has to benefit. Okay. Hope that helps a little bit. Now we are at approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve of minutes of this February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll move it.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, resolution two thousand and twenty-three forty-six, second bill list.
Thank you, I do have a question, um, I don't have the, the bill number, but I, my question is, can we, um, make a decision on resolution two oh two three dash four seven, that's the refund of the tax payment first?
Sure, if that, that will help the bill, if that.
Well, then we don't have to exclude that from the bill list, if we do that.
So let's go to that resolution, which will be, what'd you say, John?
Uh, it's on the first page of the file.
Well, there. Oh, gotcha, okay. I'll entertain a motion for, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three forty-seven, refund of tax overpayment and cancel of future taxes on block bill nine oh two, lot forty-five.
I'll move it, second.
Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Now, I'll entertain a resolution to the twenty twenty-three forty-six, bill list.
Okay, thank you, uh, does anyone have anything that they need removed or discussed? Yeah, I have one that I handed out that needs to be added, um, twenty-three, purchase order twenty-three dash zero zero four five seven, and this is to the Treasurer of State of New Jersey, Division of Water Bureau, Water System and Well Permit, um, it's for seven hundred and seventy dollars, uh, this is the TWA application that John Rushdie has been working on, uh, we did submit, uh, one, uh, payment to two D E P, they have determined that an additional seven hundred and seventy dollars is owed, and, uh, we need to get this on the bill list tonight, so we can get the check out this week today. Okay, is there anyone else? Uh, mayor not hearing or seeing any, I'll move the bill list in its entirety, including twenty-three dash zero zero four five seven.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
They've got to get their couple of bucks in, and they make it crazy, tomorrow, they're going to pick the number and then target the number.
We need to add to that, fifty-three point one billion dollar refund.
Yeah. They need the money really bad. Approval of the consent agenda?
Show me.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance of introduction, ordinance three, twenty twenty-three, animal licensing, an ordinance of the BURPAKON County of Sussex, amending section two forty-eight dash four of the Code of the BURPAKON concerning animal licensing.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance four, twenty twenty-three, fire department membership, an ordinance of a BURPAKON County of Sussex, amending section seventeen dash four of the Code of PAKON, uh, BURPAKON regarding the BURPAKON fire department membership.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Final, we will be at the next council meeting, correct?
Correct.
Final hearing, ordinance one, twenty twenty-three, amending police vehicle charge, an ordinance of BURPAKON, County of Sussex, the State of New Jersey, modifying chapter thirty-eight, Police Department.
Show move.
Second. Uh, I'll open it to the public for questions and comments.
Move to bring it back.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ordinance two, twenty twenty-three, cap rate ordinance, calendar year twenty twenty-three ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limit, and to establish a cap, a cap bank at per NJSA forty A colon four dash forty-five dot one fourth.
Show move.
Second. I'll open that to the public for questions and comments.
Move to bring it back.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-eight, authorizing a contract with Sussex County for certified recycling professional services.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-nine, authorizing an award of a contract with Paxos Electrical Company for electrical services.
Show, show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty, authorizing a contract with Air Maintenance Systems for HVAC maintenance.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-one, authorizing a contract with QuickTech for IT services.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-two, authorizing an award to Navion for scanning services.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
What are the, I just get a clarification, what are scanning services?
We're going to, we're going to, we're, we are going to digitize all of our records that have taken up all of our room, and it, and we'll probably do that by block and lot, because most of the records are block and lot, so we're putting together a system that will read that piece of paper and make a digital file.
Okay.
And it's, it's, it's a little more complicated, that because we're, we have a certified system that the state, the state approves, and when they're satisfied that we have digitized our record and pervert, and preserved them correctly, then we can get rid of the paper records.
Okay, so they'll, but they'll never be lost?
No, that's, that's the point, it's being certified by the state, it's a certified process, so there's redundancy in it, you, you can't lose it.
Okay, good, thank you, yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-four, authorizing an award to Win, Winner Ford for a fire official vehicle.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-six, authorizing the appointment of Tyler Uclia, I got that, I'm sorry, U, Uclia, as fire prevention specialist.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-seven, authorizing emergency repair for well twelve pad.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three fifty-nine, authorizing a refund of police outside services.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty, authorizing a refund for tax overpayment for block four oh two oh seven lot ten.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three sixty-two, supporting the exploration of a shared service agreement with the township of Andover, County of Sussex, for joint municipal court shared services.
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
New business is the introduction of the twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Do you need a vote for that?
Show move.
Second. Paul, roll please.
Mr. Hoppercamp?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes.
If the, uh, thank you, no, I, I don't have a lot to say. I know. Again, this is the fifth consecutive year that we have a zero municipal tax increase in, and I credit that with, with our administrative efforts, with our, with our CFO, our administrator, the tax, collective tax assessor, that, it's, it's a team effort, you don't do it by accident. I know one person owes me a steak dinner because they swore we couldn't do it again, but we, we do manage our money very carefully, our finances are managed very carefully, we come a day when we can't do that, but it's a challenge, and I, I just challenge our professionals to do the very best they can, so we don't just tax and spend, it doesn't work. And so, uh, and so that, that's our budget, and the final, when, with the final, uh, uh, approval will be a public hearing, so, uh, it's a, it's a well-balanced budget, and our people really, really work hard, I cannot overemphasize how difficult that is, and talk to any, any other mayor or town or governing body, and they will tell you that, one of the most challenging things they have to do is craft a budget, especially one that's balanced, and, uh, and, and by the way, the fire chief is here, congratulation on your recovery, we're glad to have you back. It's scary stuff when it comes out of the blue, it is, and we've all been there, and you're never, you're never ready for that, but it's good to have you back, and pretty normal, I think, well, if there is such a thing.
I appreciate all the love and support that, you know, I've felt throughout this whole process.
It, it, it's a big deal, because, you know, and especially, you're one of our volunteers, and all of our volunteers are, are, are very much appreciated, and when one of them goes down, we all feel it, we all, we all feel that a lot, so. I've been to a couple meetings, of, for those of you who don't know, we have, that kind of identify, identified as a, as a town that's going to receive some funding as the opioid settlement with these big drug companies that made everybody addicts, and so it's not a lot, over the course of, I don't know, six or seven or eight years, we'll probably get about thirteen to fourteen thousand, now, we get about fourteen hundred dollars a year, uh, I'm, I'm pretty involved with the Center for Prevention, I, I go to the meetings at the county, we talk about a lot of stuff, especially having to do with drugs, and, and, and it's killing our young people, we need to do something about it, so we're talking about some activities that we're going to do and spend some money on at county level to do that, Narcan training, please take advantage of it, please, it could save someone's life in your family, or maybe just some poor person that you come across, and you have the Narcan handy, and you're, and you're trained on its use, it does save your life, if, if Narcan's not available, and a person is overdosed, they're going to die, simple as that, so Narcan training is great, have the kit, I've done it, it's really easy, uh, and once you have that, it's really a valuable tool to have. So far, I've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, and, and not a lot of people know, but we put on our website, I, we advertise it pretty good, I personally went to businesses, it's a grant for COVID relief for small businesses, so if you really got whacked pretty hard at eating, eating establishments and whatnot, digits had to close or figure out a way on how to, to keep their business alive, the county was successful through the efforts of the County Chamber of Commerce to receive, I think, one point five million, close to two million dollars from the state, for Sussex County, which is unusual, because we're very often overlooked with that kind of money, as a matter of fact, most of the time we are, but this time we weren't. So, Ryan and I went to different businesses, I actually put together a package with the, with the history on how the grant got there, the actual application we printed out, and, and, uh, information on how to get ahold of it, any questions, go to the county, and we went to a lot of businesses, thirty, forty, and ten, we had a lot of businesses in town, and, and personally went there, three of them are going to receive a grant of fifteen thousand dollars. And so, it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but if you're a little business like the diner, or the nail place, or, or, a little place like that, they got killed, fifteen thousand dollars is a big amount of money for a small business, and so we were successful, there's two more that are being reviewed, and hopefully, I, 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 I just appealed to the county to give them the maximum amount, but it's complicated, you have to give your tax statements and the accountant to review it, it's reviewed by a third party, not the county, the county